Good afternoon, everyone. Today is April 23rd, 2024. It's 1:00 PM. This is a City of Prescott City Council Study Session. We'll start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Pratim Kenthelmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Frithworth.
Here.
Councilman Gamboji.
Present.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
And Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, do you want to read the agenda item?
I can do that, Mayor. First up, we have a presentation and discussion regarding the Big Chino Water Ranch Cost Update and Pipeline Alignment Evaluation.
Good morning, Council. Good morning, Mayor. I'm Brian Reese. I'm the Water Resources Environmental Services Manager for Public Works Department in the city. And yes, today we have a presentation for you covering our cost update and alignment evaluation. So our agenda today, we're going to take you first, well, first I'd like to introduce a couple people. Helping me out with the presentation today is Lisa Jackson. She's our technical consultant from Black &amp; Veatch. And also today, we have Raymond from Civil Tech, who is also be here to answer questions more related to the wellfield, if you have any questions on that. So with that, what we'll do is we'll take you through a brief overview of the infrastructure, so we kind of know what we're talking about. As Lisa comes in and gives you some more details on the actual evaluations and estimating that she did. Then we'll move into some brief history and project goals that were set for Big Chino and cover the intergovernmental agreement that we have with Prescott Valley on this project. Then we'll take you through current status, and then I'm going to go ahead and hand off here to Lisa to take you through it. So, okay, so here's a slide that kind of shows a profile view of the Big Chino Water Ranch wellfield and pipeline facilities. So basically, this is read from left to right. Starting on the left-hand side, you have the Big Chino wellfield, so approximately plus or minus 20 miles northwest of Paulden. So that's where the wells are located at. The wellfields are then connected with a pipeline, approximately 23 miles of 36-inch gravity pipeline that continues down to you see the, what we call the 89 pump station, which is at the very bottom of the slide there. So that takes it to that low point at that point, and then we have the 89 pump station that has to be there in order to pump it back up. So you have about seven miles of 30-inch force or pressure line that gets it over there to the water production facility in Chino Valley. So the water production facility in Chino Valley had some improvements that have been, as you are well aware, are being completed at this point in time. Lisa will get a little bit more into that. But they were a part of the Big Chino Water Ranch infrastructure back when we were doing the plans. So from the water production facility, at that point, we have existing lines, various sizes from 36-inch to 12-inch, that then can take that water back or continue it up to the intermediate pump station, again, facility that's well under construction at this point in time, but was associated with Big Chino back in the day. And then from the intermediate pump station, there was existing lines that took the water all the way into our north reservoirs within the city's water system. Also shown on this slide, going back to the water production facility, as you can see on coming off on the side, there is approximately 15 miles, a 24-inch line that would take Prescott Valley's portion of their water into Prescott Valley. So Big Chino Water Ranch has a long history. It goes way back, all the way into the 70s and maybe even before that in terms of its contemplation. But in terms of this presentation, we won't take you back to 1999, is when Arizona Department of Water Resources declared that the Prescott Active Management Area was out of safe, was no longer in safe yield. So with that pronouncement, this kind of got the ball rolling, if you will, on the Big Chino Water Ranch infrastructure. So basically, the Assured Water Supply Rules say that you would have, that future development and growth would be reliant on imported or renewable water resources due to that out-of-safe-yield designation. So the Big Chino Water Ranch project was initiated with the project goals to assist the Active Management Area in achieving the mandated safe-yield goal, creating a sustainable water supply, improve water portfolio, and provide for the future demands associated with the general plan. And that was a big one, because that was that growth that needed to have that alternative water supply. We're kind of in the same boat at this point in time. We're working on a general plan. It just so happens at this point in time, and we're contemplating how we're going to account for that growth that's estimated in that plan. So by 2004, Prescott and Prescott Valley had teamed up together and had purchased a portion of the JWK Ranch, which we now know as the Big Chino Water Ranch. So with that, we entered into an IGA, an intergovernmental agreement with Prescott Valley, to share in the cost of the infrastructure for Big Chino Water and share in the water itself. So Prescott had a 54.1% stake in the cost and in the water obtained from Big Chino Water Ranch, and Prescott Valley has a 45.9% stake in the cost in the water.
Councilwoman Frithworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Question, for purposes of the record and the public, back in 2004, when we made the purchase, what was the total cost of the purchase?
The total cost of, I'm not sure if I have the exact cost. I believe it was roughly in the $23 million range. Maybe I could ask Mark if that's close? Okay, yeah, so roughly $23 million, I believe, is what the cost was.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What was also the, did we also split the cost with Prescott Valley as part of that purchase, or was that just all us?
Yes, I believe we split that cost right along the lines of this IGA.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay. Okay, so the project moved forward on to about 2007 with a percentage of 90% plans for most of the infrastructure that we're going to be talking about today. And at that point is when we've, well, the project was put on hold for various reasons. In the time in between, we've had renewed interest in Big Chino. It's never gone away. We've talked about it for various needs, as we just discussed. The goal of obtaining safe yield in the AMA area, growth within the general plan, when do we need it, all these big questions. And in order to evaluate a project of this scale, we need to know what the cost of it is. And when you have a cost estimate that's going on 15 years old, it's probably not the best numbers to be utilizing when we're having these discussions. So back in July of 2023, Council here approved to allow us to move forward with an update on that cost estimate. So, and that's what we're going to be talking about, the results of that estimate, and also the results of an alignment evaluation that we did. As we started to get into the details of our cost estimating, it became apparent that we probably want to look at some of our alignments in a little bit more detail and understand if we want to kind of move in another direction at this point. So we asked Black &amp; Veatch to help us out with that, and they'll cover the alignment evaluation in a little bit more detail. In between 2007, when the project was put on hold, and now, several components of the project had been removed. The IPS, the intermediate pump station and reservoir that we showed on the slide earlier, was pulled out, and plans were completed on its own, and that project is nearing construction at this point. And the improvements to the Chino Valley Water Production Facility themselves, which was much needed, the infrastructure was, I think, built back in the 50s, maybe a little bit before that, were also pulled out, and those improvements are just about complete at this point in time. Completion of both of those facilities are running about $59 million. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Lisa, so she can tell you a little bit about the evaluation and the cost estimate we did.
All right, so in order to understand a little bit more about the facility and what we estimated for the cost, I want to talk first about the requirements of the facility. And when you design this sort of infrastructure, you want to make sure that it will work for you both when it's first started up, as well as into the future, within the life cycle of the infrastructure that you're providing. So that's why I'm going to start with the operational flow requirements here. The allocation is about 8,067 acre feet per year. That's going to be split between Prescott and Prescott Valley. That's an annual average amount of groundwater you can withdraw per year. So it's an annual average spread over the whole year. But when you design these sorts of water supply transmission systems, you want to make sure that you design them not only for the annual average flow, you have to recognize that over the course of the year, you're going to have low flows in the wintertime and then higher flows in the summertime, and they even out, that will allow you then to pump and move that annual average allocation over the entire year. So we call that like a peaking factor, okay? And what you want to do is you want to make sure that you design your facilities to handle those peaking factors, both initially and into the future. So initially, we do have more capacity than your annual average that we're building in to allow you to pump that additional water in the summer to get your, to take advantage of the full allocation that you have. So initially, the facilities, the wellfield, the pipeline between the wellfield and the Chino Production Facility, and then the pump stations, those are, so the pipeline itself needs to be designed for the build-out capacity, because you don't want to have to go in and tear that little pipeline out or build another one 15, 20 years from now. You want to design it for the whole thing. So the pipeline, the 36-inch pipeline, is designed for the total build-out allocation, and then the pump stations are designed for the initial needs for the, from the time it starts for the next 15 to 20 years, because that's about the life cycle of your pumps. You'd have to be replacing them by then. So our initial capacity of the Highway 89 pump station is going to have a 12 million gallon per day capacity initially. And then the ultimate capacity of the system between the wellfield and the Chino Production Facility is 17.3 million gallons per day. So that is the build-out flows that it was designed to do. All of those peaking factors and demands for resources, those are based on your master plan, and that's, were based on the master plan at the time that we started the project, back in around 2006. So Brian mentioned resources. I know that that's continually changing with your general plan, so that is definitely one thing that we'd recommend that when you, if you decide to move forward with this, you might want to go back and relook at that, because you want to make sure that you design it for your needs. Okay, so we're going to move on. So as Brian talked about, the remaining Big Chino Water Ranch components, there's the well ranch, the wells at the ranch itself, and I'm going to go into each one of these separately on subsequent slides. There's the transmission pipelines, and then there's the Highway 89 pump station. And then there is also a part of the Prescott Valley facilities that were not constructed at the Chino Water Production Facility that would be part of the Big Chino Water Ranch project. We initially had them planned in one pump station, that it was going to be a shared building between Prescott and Prescott Valley. Prescott, then with your Chino Production Facility and your need to replace that aging infrastructure, you went ahead and built your pump station part of that for the initial needs. But then in the future, when Prescott Valley builds their part of the pump station for the system, there, we have put into our cost estimate two more pumps for Prescott that will help get you to that ultimate flow needs that you would have in the future. So those pumps are going to be installed. It's just the buried infrastructure under the building, so you're not digging up a building later on to put in two more pumps. So I just want to bring that forward. All right, so I'm going to go now and focus a little bit on some of the studies and optimization we did. When we went back and looked at the alignment of the pipeline, the initial study looked at, I don't know, five, six different alignments between the wellfield and the production and the Highway 89 pump station, and then also up to the production facility. We, at that time, narrowed it down to this Option 1A, which is on the, I guess it would be the right-hand side of your, of your, so we followed Big Chino Road up into Feather Mountain, and then we went south from Feather Mountain and kind of cut through some of the areas there, and then into the Highway 89 pump station. That alignment was looked at, and it was preferred over the other alignment, which is Alternative One that you see here at that time, because of some particular circumstances that some of them have changed, which would be, you know, some of the permitting requirements that now, with the Clean Water Act and some of the changes there. So those requirements have been changed and updated. So when we started this update, the city came back and said, you know, we'd like just to take a relook at that, because those two were very close in terms of scoring on the criteria. So let's go back and look at this to see, well, do we want to go along Big Chino Road instead of cutting along south here through some of these properties, because those would require more easements for the city to purchase? So the alignment study, it looked at two main things. It looked at a quantitative, which was the cost of doing the construction between the two different alignments. The length of pipeline is very similar. There were a great amount of differences in the cost. And then we also looked at a qualitative criteria, and that is based on weighting of these criteria that you see here under the second bullet, the constructability, the public disturbance, the easement acquisition requirements, jurisdictional crossings, which would have a federal nexus involved with that, future maintenance and accessibility, and then also entity coordination. We worked with the City of Prescott and also members of the Prescott Valley team, looked at this criteria, and they weighted them. And they, what we wanted to do is say, okay, of this criteria, what's the most important to you? And the most important one is probably not a surprise, would be the future maintenance and accessibility that the project partners would have to the facility later on. So that was the highest scoring one, and the next two scoring ones were the constructability of it, which was the top one, and then very close to it was the easement acquisition, because we know easement takes time, and sometimes it can be relatively contentious. So those are all important things that we looked at, and we scored the two based on those, on the weighting of them. And based on that scoring, the two alternatives, Alternative One that goes along the Big Chino Road is the preferred alignment.
Probably for Brian. So we have had mutual discussions with Prescott Valley, because this realignment obviously has an impact on current costs, future costs, maintenance costs, et cetera. So have they been involved in this and agreed on it?
Yes, yes, they have. We included them in the evaluation, the evaluation process that we went through. Yeah, and they're well aware of, they provided their scoring, attended the workshops, and were aware throughout the process and of the results.
Thank you. Councilmember Rusing.
Yeah, I just have a technical question. What material are you specing for the water main?
Okay. What we like to do is, we like to specify more than one material type. Because of market conditions and other construction throughout the nation, we want to give the contractor the option to choose the material that provides, that still provides equal value in terms of its performance, but there are certain materials, depending on what else is happening in the world, that may be less expensive than others. So ductile iron pipe would be one of the alternatives at this, at this size. It's kind of at the top range of ductile iron pipe in terms of its affordability compared to cement mortar coated steel, which is a welded steel product that has a coating on it. So those are the two main materials that we would specify. Those are what are currently included in the 90% specification, so you get a advantage there.
Do they both have the, about the average life, lifetime?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear you're not specing PVC pipe.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Anything else? Okay. All right, so I'm going to move away from the alignment study, because once we had that done, that helped us form the basis of our cost estimating. I want to talk about the wellfield. Their, the costs are, were done by Civil Tech, and Raymond's here to represent them on that one. And they were for 11 different wells. The wells are connected by a pipeline backbone to help deliver the water that they pump from the ground into two 1 million gallon tanks that would be located at the Water Ranch. Those are the tanks. And then there would have to be also a disinfection system included with that, because you want to make sure that you disinfect the water, so you don't get bacteria growth and other things within the pipeline as it's traveling between the Water Ranch and your Chino Production Facility. There are also other facilities that they have included in their cost estimate. They had costs for three generators. They had costs for some security provisions, like buildings around the wells. They had costs for instrumentation control of the wellfield, because it's going to be out there, and the city needs to have eyes and know what is happening at the wellfield, because it is, will be a critical piece of infrastructure. So those are all included within that wellfield and storage facility cost. For the Highway 89 pump station, again, the site is located on existing City of Prescott property, right there, right about the intersection of Old 89 and 89. It is easy accessible. It has good access to power, so you're not paying a premium to get APS power to the site. The facility itself would be a block building with a kind of a metal pearloin roof. It would have access to the pumps from the top of the roof, so you'd be able to pull them out. They're rather large pumps. You need to have that capability. There would be three pumps initially, two more pumps added in the future, but we included the cost for that. It would have a security fence around it. It also would have the monitoring control. It had the communications capabilities for you. And then, of course, the APS power to the site for that. So once APS brings the power into site, then we have to then distribute it to all the pumps and get them operating. There would be a transient system, and what that is, is a surge tank. So if the pumps suddenly turn off due to loss of power, you're not going to have a damaging pressure wave through your pipe. That surge tank helps mitigate that. For the Chino Production Facility, this was a little bit more tricky of a facility for us to cost estimate, because we couldn't just use our 90% plans for that. You already have your, majority of your pump station done. So what we did, and there were provisions for this when the, when the current pump station, the currently new pump station was designed to, to put the second Prescott Valley pump station just to the east of it. So that's what you see here in the kind of light blue box there in the, in the photo. And what we did is we took the, kind of the Prescott pump station plan and used those a little bit as a basis for our cost estimate here. So it'll be a block building. It has a wood frame roof. There'll be separate room for electrical power. There'll be a bridge crane, so your teams can get access to do O and M on the pumps. And there's provisions for some future pumps there, because again, we're only building what we have to do initially for the next 10 to 20 years when you build it, then, and then have a capability to expand without incurring a lot of additional costs to expand it in the future. So we don't want you to have to, you know, cut through a bunch of concrete in order to add some more pipe or anything like that. So that's what is in there. There'll be two separate electrical services, one There'll be two separate electrical services, one for Prescott Valley, so they can pay for the cost of their pumping. And then when Prescott eventually adds the pumps, then there'll be another service added for Prescott pumps that would be part of that building.
Councilmember Rusing, you had a question?
Yeah, I had a hard time figuring it out from the map, but the Prescott Valley trunk branches off at Chino, or is it north of the airport?
It, it branches off at Chino, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they pump into that 24-inch line, and the cost is, for the 24-inch line, for them, is not included in our cost estimate. It's only a 24-inch line from the pump station to the edge of the property. They were going to take care of the cost of bringing it into, into their facilities.
Okay, thank you.
You know, Brian, I have a question. When they're estimating the total cost of this Big Chino Water Ranch pipeline, all the way from the Big Chino Water Ranch into Chino, and then splitting the lines, one to Prescott Valley and one that will be included in our system, we're looking at a series of components here. We've got the intermediate pump station, we've got the expanded reservoirs, of which the city itself is going to benefit significantly from those components. But part of that is also part of the overall cost of delivering this water to the Big Chino pipe, pipeline project. So how do we build the city of Prescott Valley for their part of these components, so that their 46% of the overall project is properly allocated? And that we're not absorbing all these costs ourselves?
Yeah, so I think the critical components that are just, that are just benefiting for this, for the city and for Prescott Valley have been well-defined in the previous cost estimating and, and the procedure setup. So, for instance, the IPS, the intermediate pump station, was never included in the original cost estimate as a participation split for Prescott Valley. That cost would have been totally absorbed by the city of Prescott, because we achieved 100% of the benefit of it. The 24-inch pipeline that Lisa was just talking about, going from the, from the water production facility to get it to the Prescott Valley distribution system, was also never included in the cost estimate. That was a cost that would have to be totally obtained by the city of Prescott, because it only benefits them. As far as the remainder of the, of the, of the components left, I think those are all well with, or they're, they're, they make sense for the 54%, 45% split that the intergovernmental agreement has established for the cost splitting and the water sharing participation. So, does that answer your question, Mayor?
Not really, because I think these other components that we've already invested in are going to have a functional benefit for the completion of the pipeline and its performance. So I think we should be able to recover some of that cost, 46% of it, even though, let's say, for example, the contract requires Prescott Valley to contribute 46% of the cost. But if the intermediate pump station is 90% beneficial for the city, then the remaining 10% should be split into that 45, 54, 46%. Because otherwise, you're trying to say, well, that pump station would never be needed if the pipeline was just built without it. And I don't think your explanation indicates that that's true.
Yeah, like, well, so we could, we could definitely look at an evaluation to see what components we've already constructed contributed to the functioning of the Big Chino project as it moves forward. And, and work with Prescott Valley to, to, to work through the negotiations for those costs. That's, that's definitely, we haven't done that at this point, but it is definitely something that we could do.
Well, when we start seeing the numbers here, $59 million here, and that huge new water tank that we have out there by the Deepwater Ranch area, you know, we're making these investments 100%, but part of the benefit ultimately for the, the pipeline will be included to their benefit of Prescott Valley. And I think that needs to be quantified, and they need to understand that. And I don't want to wait until the thing is finally done and opened, and then go back and say, well, we made this investment 12 years ago, and we're going to add CPI to it, and therefore you owe us this additional money. I think there needs to be an agreement at the beginning that that's how it's going to work.
Okay. We'll be talking about some next steps towards the end of the presentation, and that would be a good place to, to, to mark that as something to move forward with.
Do you want to borrow my pen?
Got one myself.
All right, so, yeah, here's the numbers, but I do want to give you some background of these numbers. The majority of the numbers, the ones without the asterisks, those were completed, taking the plans and doing a, what we call a bottom-up estimate. So we, Black and Beach is a design-build team, and we do these sorts of infrastructure all the time. We know the cost of pumps, we know the cost of pipes, we know the, the cost of excavation equipment, the amount of excavation, the number of days it's going to take to excavate certain materials. We took those costs and we, from, from, we took all the parts and pieces, and then we combined them into each facility, and we came up with a very detailed cost estimate for the pipelines, for the road stabilization between where Big Chino Road ends as pavement and up to the site, up to the well filled, for the pump stations. The, the well filled itself, the, there haven't been all of the, probably the hydrologic studies that you need, and so that cost estimate, which was done by, by CivilTech, it was done based on just an escalation of the cost that they had back in 2007. They just escalated them up by that factor. The utility power, we have been working with APS, letting them know what the needs are for these new facilities, and they are working on an estimate for the power. They, as of last week, they hadn't had it ready yet for us. So what we did with those costs is, we took the costs that they provided us in 2006, and we doubled them, because based on our experience, the cost of electrical infrastructure is at least double of what it was back in 2006. There've been a lot of up and downs in the market cycle for things like copper, so, but overall, we estimated about a double, doubling of the cost. Once we get those updated costs, we can update the estimate, but right now, this is the best that we have. The costs for the easements and for acquiring those easements, those were provided by the city of Prescott for us. So those are the costs that you see in this table. The table has three columns with numbers in it. The first column is what we call the baseline cost. And then, because we know that we don't have perfect plans, and particularly with the Chino Valley Water Production Facility, we had to kind of interpret a little bit between the lines, because we were using a, a different design, and we were trying to make it work for the Prescott Valley pump station. So there, there could be some, I guess, we want to make sure we have some contingency within it. And we also understand that market trends go up and they go down. So we have a low number, which is 20% of the baseline cost, and then we have a higher number, high number, which is 30% of the baseline cost. And those, those are to cover some of those things, as well as market, market conditions as we continue on with our economy here in the great state of Arizona. Things are, things go up and down, we know that, and we're hoping that they're going to stabilize a lot more compared to the, the post-COVID time. So I'm going to turn it back to Brian, unless there's any questions about these numbers and what went into coming up with them.
Okay, yeah, so, so next slide just takes those costs, those baseline costs that Lisa has just described for us, and looks at it in terms of our IGA with Prescott Valley, based on the 54.1 and the 45.9% split. So each one of those facility components there is shown for the city of Prescott in green, coming up with the total cost of about approximately $141.5 million. And the same situation, that's based on 54.1%. And then same situation for Prescott Valley, shown there in gray, 120, approximately $120 million, based on a 45.9% of the baseline cost. So that kind of shows you on a breakdown of the cost at this point in time, I wanted to talk a little bit, we have this, this slide right here, which I could let Lisa kind of describe a little bit, a little bit more detail, but it's, it's basically a construction materials cost change over time, to kind of give you an idea of how costs have been escalating. And you can see that, starting right there in, was it 2020, you have the, the intense escalation of price that, that we see. And then we're seeing, as we moved into the last year or so, that it's been more of a stabilization of the price at that point in time. So nobody here has a, has a crystal ball to determine what's going to happen with costs, but we, but Lisa, who's been, is, has worked in this infrastructure, infrastructure for, for, for a good long time, has a lot of experience in it, and, and, and what we're really projecting is probably that we'll kind of settle back down to the, to the inclination that you see on most of this graph, is probably where we're going to lay out over the next few years. That's the most probable at this point. So I wanted to go into some next steps.
Councilmember Gamboji.
Brian, would you be so kind as to back up two slides?
Certainly.
In PV's cost estimate for pipelines, does that include their 24-inch pipe?
No.
How much would that add into it?
Lisa, do you have even?
How many miles is it?
15.
15 miles? I, I would say, I don't know, 10, 10 million maybe?
Yeah, all part guesses.
Thanks a lot, Brian.
No problem.
So Brian, I'm still curious, how do we bill Prescott Valley for these ongoing investments that we're making?
Well, we do bill them.
Yeah.
We do bill them, yeah. So for, for instance, the cost of this study, we'll bill them at the end of the year. We'll provide them all the invoices from all our consultants, and, and they, we provide them one, one invoice at the end of the year for all work that we do related to Big Chino proper in our, in our investment. So if we have to do land management out in the Big Chino and cost studies of this nature, we, we provide them all the invoices and we, we settle up at the end of the year.
Well, we know that the IGA is 20 years old now, and from Lisa's presentation, we're looking at a life cycle of 15 to 20 years on some of these components. So do we bill them a depreciated amount? Because obviously, if I'm Prescott Valley, I'm not going to pay the bill until the pipeline is actually built and delivered.
Correct.
Otherwise, it's just a good idea. And I'm not, I don't think I'd be willing to pay a portion of it until the completion and we get the value of the contract, which is the water delivered into their city. So if we've taken 20 years to get to this point, and we're putting in components that have a 20-year lifestyle, cycle, by the time the final pipeline is built and delivering, those components could depreciate by 50% or more.
So we haven't billed Prescott Valley for any components of the pipeline at this point in time. They wouldn't start paying for that until those contracts are in place to actually start construction.
Yeah, that's my whole point.
Yeah.
So at what point do we bill for those parts of those components that, that are necessary for the completion of this pipeline? So we have to wait until it's completed.
Mayor, if I could, I think it's important, part of this conversation to what I'm hearing you ask is, what, what portions of what we've completed can be attributed to Prescott Valley's benefit? So it's analyzing that, it's, it's quantifying that, and then it's, it's applying the, the share that's proportionate, right? I think there's still some work that we can do to identify what currently that's been constructed and in place that would benefit Prescott Valley and, and get to that number.
Yeah, I think there needs to be some financial understanding and agreement as we proceed with our investments here, so that ultimately, with the pipeline is completed and delivering the water that they're expecting, that they have already agreed on paying a portion of those components as we continue on with our investments in construction. Now, I know I asked this of Gwen, because monitoring this whole project over the last 10 or so years, knowing that SRP has superior water rights coming down the Verity River, and being able to assure them that if this pipeline, when it's built, it's not going to impact the perennial flow of that river, so that they can continue to collect water into Lake Pleasant and deliver it, there's suggestions, and I think there've been more than suggestions, that we may have to pump treated effluent back into the Big Chino aquifer to make sure that the flow of the Verity River isn't degraded. And obviously, there's no consideration of that possibility in these, these cost estimates, but I think it's important that they be considered, because we may have to do it.
Yeah, so, so at this point, the cost estimate is for the infrastructure. As we move forward with Big Chino, there'll be a lot of different components that we'll be looking at. I'm sure I'll be appear having a lot of different presentations for you on various, various options, mitigation measures, and things to come forward. So we'll note those questions, and we'll make sure that we, we're working on responses.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question, Brian. With the intermediate pump station, that's the $59 million that we're looking at, or, 40-ish? 40, sorry, 40-ish. I, I understand the mayor's point about that infrastructure eventually coming to benefit Prescott Valley upon completion of the pipeline, provided that, there's a lot of caveats to that, and I won't go into all of them. Is there benefit to Prescott Valley before that pipe, that pump station, like before the Big Chino is completed? Would there be benefit that Prescott Valley would receive?
No, I don't think there's significant benefit in IPS for, intermediate pump station for Prescott Valley.
Okay.
I think that, that facility provides the, the storage requirements, it allowed us to, to take discharge from additional airport wellfields into the immediate, intermediate pump station, so that it could deliver that distribution throughout the city. And I think that's where we're going to find that the value of that facility lies. We'll look at each of the components to make sure.
I guess with these various components, part of my question is, I, I wonder if, if we go to Prescott Valley and say, hey, this is part of the pipeline you need to kick in for it, but the pipeline doesn't exist, and there isn't a, a benefit for them to say it is, I, I just, I wonder if they're just going to look at us like we're asking them to pay for our infrastructure for something that is way down the line, without kind of a more concrete determination? And, and meanwhile, these existing pieces of infrastructure, as far as I can tell, only benefit the city of Prescott. So I guess I, I just wonder if there's not a little bit of a disconnect there? If I'm sitting in Prescott Valley, I might have questions about that.
Well, what we need to do is probably just take a look at the existing infrastructure that we've put in place since 2007, and just do a, do an evaluation and see what contributions or benefits it could have had to, to the infrastructure we're talking about here today. And then we'll come back with that, and we'll let you guys, and we'll let you know what we, what we found out.
Thank you.
Mayor Protim.
Brian, just for clarification on some of the, the messages here that we got from both Kathy and Brandon Montoya, if I'm looking at this as a project as a whole, and this could probably be a contractual obligation that we have to look at, when you're looking at a project as a whole, and we're calling this a project, there, there's the upfront work, which we call prep. So is there a provision in the contract for all this prep that we're doing to bring this line in to benefit both parties? And if I'm guessing, the split would be the same as the agreed-upon split?
Yes.
So if you look at this as a singular project, doesn't matter when we did all that initial prep, it's all leading up to the same end result, providing water to Prescott Valley and to Prescott. It's very customary to make that split that we've agreed upon include all of the prep as well. So you indicated earlier that we are sending them bills. What are we sending them bills? are we sending them bills for? And is that split, the customary split?
Yeah, and I don't think we've sent them any invoices or bills for any of the infrastructure that we've been talking about here immediately. When I was talking about the invoices, I was talking about, in our purchase of Big Chino Water Ranch, there's general maintenance and management of that land that has to happen. So we've been splitting the bills with Prescott Valley on that ever since we've had it. There's other components of this, like I said, we contacted them when we wanted to do this study, because we will be invoicing them at the end of the fiscal year for that. And various other projects of that nature that between us and Prescott Valley is just needed to maintain and keep our Big Chino Water Ranch available and where it needs to be at this point in time. So just general upkeep really.
One more thing. So Joe, do we have the ability to backcharge PV as per the contract for the prep that we're doing in order to bring in the water?
We do. We have obligations to share those costs. And we are doing that. To the question regarding the mayor, on some of that infrastructure work that's being used to bring in water, to what extent that's necessary for the pipeline, I obviously don't know. I think you've heard from Public Works that they'll look into that. But we do have, we don't have this time, a timing where we have to bill them by a certain date. But as we move forward with costs that benefit the Big Chino Pipeline Project, we invoice them their 46%, and they pay for that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you. My question is, have we done any testing on the water quality out there at the Big Chino? I know we have monitoring wells and test wells, but it seems to me before we anticipate building this pipeline, maybe we should test the water for PFOWs, PFOSs, and arsenic. And maybe if there is contamination out there, we would probably have to figure that out, figure in those costs of this water. So to me, I think we should test that water to see what kind of quality we have. Hopefully, it's good.
Thank you, Councilmember Rusin. So I could have Lisa speak a little bit more on it. I think we did some testing. I don't have the actual data in front of me. I think we've done testing in the past for arsenic. And Lisa, if you could, maybe you could just come up and talk a little bit about what you saw in that arsenic testing.
All right. So first of all, I want to qualify this. This is based on a report that Prescott provided to me, because I did ask the question about arsenic, knowing the Verde and that there is arsenic in the Verde. And there were other wells that were tested, and these are monitoring wells. There was only one that was over the limit for arsenic. I didn't see any testing on PFOS or PFOWs, so I'm not sure. I can't speak to that at all. But of the one well, there's a lot of things you can do in terms of screening, taking it from the depth, or blending. So this is all we know at this point. And I'm sure, before you do additional infrastructure out there, you'll be doing some more testing. I'm positive you will.
Arnie, thank you.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, so far, I'm trying to figure out how much we've sunk already into this project. So could you outline all of those kinds of costs, just so, for the purposes of the public, we're also keeping them abreast of what we've spent so far?
So initial purchase of Big Chino Water Ranch proper, plus or minus $23 million into that, into the land, into various studies, I'd have to, I'd have to look back at the contracts to see what our design spend was. It wasn't part of the cost estimate update, so I don't have that number for you today. But we sunk in the cost to design the 90%, up to a 90% level on that project. When we're talking about the infrastructure for Big Chino, then you can look at the breakout of the IPS. It was part of the 90% design previously. And you can look at the outbreak of the Chino Valley Water Production Facility. Those two facilities are approximately $59 million together in total cost. There is also, I'm not sure of the exact date, but at some point in time, maybe circa 2016, 2017, there was an additional $5 million gallon tank that was built out at the Chino Water Production Facility that I do believe was in the original 90% plans. And that cost could be considered as part of the original Big Chino estimate also. I don't have the cost of that readily for you at this point in time, but I can see about getting it. So we can provide maybe a breakdown of all of those facilities and the costs, so we can give you guys the total.
But from what you're just, rough adding up what you're saying, we're in already about $90 million?
Yeah, it's a big number.
That's a big number. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Gwen Roach, Public Works Director. I'd just like to clarify a little bit, the $59 million for the IPS and the water production facility. The water production facility was last constructed in 1947. So that facility is 76 years old the last time we did this cost estimate. Replacing it was imperative because it was old, not because we needed it for Big Chino. When we constructed or reconstructed the water production facility, we made accommodation for if and when Big Chino came to be needed. So we constructed it in a way that we could add on to it to facilitate importing water from Big Chino. So the $40 million that we spent on the water production facility was to replace aging infrastructure with an accommodation for an expansion to accommodate Big Chino Water Ranch water, if and when it came here. The intermediate pump station was constructed as a result of our 2005 decision in order from ADWR. That decision in order required that the city augment their pumping from the Chino Valley wellfield into the airport area closer to where we recharge effluent and surface water. So the IPS facility was designed and constructed in order to, one, reduce our pressures of water that was coming from the water production facility in half, as well as to meet our obligation under the decision in order from the state of Arizona. We added extra capacity to those tanks to facilitate Prescott's portion of Big Chino water, should it be imported from the ranch. It's my opinion that Prescott Valley doesn't have an obligation to the IPS, but we will look at that a little bit closer. When the water gets to the Chino Water Production Facility, that's when Prescott Valley and Prescott go their own way. We pump water through our three transmission mains from the Chino Valley Production Facility into the IPS, and then subsequently into the north-south zone, which feeds the entire rest of the city of Prescott. Prescott Valley, in Lisa's presentation here, will have to build their own pump station for the water that comes in from the Big Chino Pipeline. The water will go into their pump facility and their tank, and then off to Prescott Valley. So I just want to be clear that there is infrastructure that we built to accommodate Big Chino water, but it's for the city of Prescott's portion of the Big Chino water. So that $59 million is not a part of Prescott Valley's obligation, because that's our infrastructure that serves our community after the water production facility in the town of Chino Valley. Does that help?
It would help if you would go back to Slide 2 of the whole system picture. Because we're talking about things, and you guys know this off the top of your head, but I'll admit, I don't, and the public doesn't.
So here on this map, if you look on the far left, you see two tanks, right? And the wellfield. So that's the wellfield. And then when it dips down, that's the 89 pump station, right, Brian?
Yes.
So the topography goes down, and that's the pump station that we're going to build with Prescott Valley on Highway 89. That's part of the realignment, right?
So both cities are going to split those two first costs you've just outlined?
Yep, starting at the wellfield, pipeline to Highway 89, a pump station on Highway 89. And then when it goes back up, and you see the two tanks, that's taking it into Chino Valley. So that pipeline leading into Chino Valley, that's a shared cost. When we hit that water production facility, you can see how Prescott Valley's line veers off to the right. You see that at the bottom of the screen? The blue line that leads to three fictitious tanks over here? That's Prescott Valley's line that doesn't exist, and their tanks that they haven't built yet. From the water production facility, you go back up in topography, and you see those three dashed lines there? Those are the three transmission mains that the city currently has, our 36-inch, our 18, and our 12-inch transmission mains, from the Chino Production Facility that come into the city of Prescott. Well, now they come to the intermediate pump station site, which is where we just built two 6-million-gallon tanks. You see three tanks there, because initially, the plan was to build a third tank in the future, when addition, you know, like Lisa said, you kind of phase this, you don't bring all the water at one time. So the plan was to build two tanks, and then eventually build a third tank. Well, the city decided to build additional capacity in the two tanks, so we won't have to build a third tank in the future. So that's the additional capacity that I'm talking about in the intermediate pump station tanks that will facilitate water coming in from Big Chino Water Ranch. And then from that IPS, you see the transmission lanes go into the two tanks at the very top of the graph. That's our north tank, over off of Willow Creek Road, and I think it's Douglas. Does that help?
Very much. So this helps us understand what infrastructure Prescott Valley will even ever touch, and what they absolutely won't touch of our costs. So thank you.
You're welcome.
So I would like the answer, once you get to the point of what we've already spent so far, that would be really good for us to understand.
No problem. We'll note that, and we'll get that over to you. Okay, so next steps at this point. APS is going to have us their detailed cost estimate for providing power to the facilities. We should have that in the next several weeks, hopefully. And then Lisa can go ahead and finalize the report with those final numbers, and we'll have that, and we'll have this exercise will be completed at that point in time. After that, we talked about some of the things that we've concluded here that we want to do for you. I think we noted that with the infrastructure cost and evaluation of already-built components of the project. So we'll work towards getting you answers on those things. An assessment alignment that's similar to the one that we did from the wellfield to the 89 highway would be beneficial to do the same type of analysis from 89 to the water production facility. That area is in Chino Valley. That alignment was probably set somewhere around 2005 timeframe. There's been, there could be possible other right-ofways that we could utilize. Chino Valley's networks of roads is somewhat complicated, so we probably need to see and make sure that we're in right-ofway as much as possible. Sometimes there's pavement there, but there's not, it isn't always a public street. So we want to do an alignment with that. Mark, would you like to?
I was just gonna, I didn't want to interrupt you.
Okay, no problem. Okay. So yeah, so we'd like to do an alignment of that facility. That'll be an alignment totally from the wellfields at that point completed, all the way to the water production facility. That way, we can make sure that we're doing the most efficient alignment in terms of cost, time of easement acquisition, and potential, trying to avoid any potential alignment issues. The city, the next step would probably be securing the easement over the next several years. I think we're, once we have an alignment evaluation completed, and we know exactly where the pipe is going to be, we can go ahead and look at securing the easements that are needed for the rest of the pipeline. To this point, we've probably secured somewhere roughly around 20% to 25% of the easement needed. So we got about 75% to go. Resource need projections, we obviously will be looking at that closely over the next several years to try to determine exactly, you know, when and how we would utilize the Big Chino water. It's a big question. We've talked about the goals of the Big Chino when this project was first started was to help assist the Prescott AMA obtain safe yield. And that's a goal that, you know, still, we need to see if that's the credible goal, and if that's the direction we want to go. Because once we establish how we're going to use that water, then we can best look at creating a plan that's going to achieve that goal. And so we'll be looking at that as we move forward. And then funding sources. So we talked, we'll definitely be looking at different funding sources, whether it be WIFL loans, which we utilized to construct some of our infrastructure we talked about here today. There's various funding sources out there. Obviously, we're not talking about a small amount of money here. If we're talking in the 140 to 150 million range for Prescott's portion of the Big Chino Water Ranch. But it's a number that is also, you know, is also obtainable for a city of our size. And if you look at what we have to, what we have to plan for our infrastructure, just to keep our current infrastructure working and in good order, we're not talking about, we're talking about pretty big numbers in that respect, too. So finding those funding sources is important, but I think this is a project that is manageable by the city. I think as long as we do it right, and we put the time and the effort into creating a good plan moving forward. So with that, that's going to complete our presentation. I'd like to thank you for listening, and we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you. We've been in the grips of a drought for the last 30 years, and we already live in a very arid area. And I think it's very important that we be resilient and be prepared. And the Gila River Basin has been, drainage has been decreasing. The Colorado River Basin flow has been decreasing. Even the Mississippi River drainage area has been decreasing. So I think it's important that we maintain our water rights, and we just don't want to lose our insurance policy, which is the Big Chino. Thank you.
Mark, did you have some more comments?
Yeah, I was hoping to clarify some of the questions that came up. As Gwen stated, not the infrastructure we built in Chino isn't for the Big Chino Pipeline. That was needed for our existing system. The costs that we have sunk into Big Chino through fiscal year '23 is a total of about $35,730,000. That includes the purchase of the ranch, acquisition of the right-ofways that we've done, the consultants that we've used. It doesn't include any of the costs we have this year related to this update or any of that. And Prescott Valley has shared in those costs. They have paid $16,680,000 essentially already of those costs. And again, those do not include any infrastructure. They include monitoring wells and things like that. But that life of things like that is much more than 15 years. Does that help answer the question on the costs?
Yeah, that's a lot different than $90 million.
Well, yeah, because a lot of that other infrastructure that was referenced was part of our existing system. It won't be used for the Big Chino portion that goes to PV.
But when the time comes for us to figure out if the Little Chino was to no longer be available to us, and we had to go in this direction, would the extra planning that you did in those fields count towards us moving? Maybe not PV picking up a portion Maybe not PV picking up a portion of it, but counting towards our city investment to pull water from the Big Chino?
Yeah, again, that'd be more for Public Works. I mean.
Just building on what Gwen had said, that she had built a little more for.
You know, Brian, I have another question. Where the heck is this report from the Goldrind Associates on the monitoring well data that we provided them over a year ago? So that's important for our decision and order because the Arizona Department of Water Resources is contemplating removing this 8,000 acre feet from our water portfolio. And if that is removed, then a lot of these questions about importation from the Big Chino Water Ranch change dramatically, okay?
Yeah, definitely. Well, yes, exactly. And we're working on all those fronts right now with our DNO. With this particular, with this particular topic, I wanted to stay on focus with the costs, what we're prepared to talk about today. But CA1, our Comprehensive One Agreement, where we're trying to create a model that, that the three partners, us, Prescott Valley, and SRP are all working towards. The model is moving forward. The model's moving forward. We're getting to the, we're getting to the calibration point where things have slowed down a bit. Indications from our consultant is that we're, we're still on schedule to have a model that's going to be able to be reviewed by all of our technical representatives, our technical consultants, because PV and us share a technical consultant that helps us through this process. SRP has a technical consultant. Then you have, you have WSP who is actually creating the model. And indications is, is that they'll have a model to give to the, to the partners to look at by September, October of this year. That's the best indication that I have at this point.
Well, I just think that if we're looking at a future cost estimate that we have to start budgeting for or anticipating, if it turns out that we do have to return some treated effluent back into the Big Chino aquifer, that that has to be included as an overall assessment of what this total project is going to cost us. And that has not been even mentioned in this analysis.
Well, I think it's, the reason we haven't mentioned it is because at this point, we're going to be exploring a lot of mitigation opportunities. Once the model is created, it has to go into a phase of scenario development. That could take upwards of another year to year and a half. Once that's done, then in my mind is, or at least, at least has been started and well underway is when we can have enough information from those models and that scenario development to understand what's happening in the Big Chino sub-basin. At that point, we can start looking at mitigation options. And there's a number of mitigation options. I'm not really prepared to speak on them at this point in time, but there's definitely more mitigation options than just taking effluent back up into the upper Verde River. We're going to be looking at a lot of, a lot of different scenarios. So once we get, once we get the information, we get the facts and the, and a scientific model that we can agree on what the results are, then I think we'll be in a better position to talk about mitigation measures. And then we can start plugging them into the cost and into the program.
Does she have another comment? No? Can we take public comment at this time?
We have one public comment, Card Mayor, that's from Howard Mechanic.
Here's another one from Gary. Continue.
Mr. Mayor and Council, first, Mr. Mayor, I agree with what you just said about
Howard having a hard time hearing you. Can you speak a little closer?
Is this turned on? Okay. As we discussed last July, this is not turned on. Okay. As we discussed last July, a large portion of this project could be a mitigation plan. A large portion of the costs could be a mitigation plan. We can't consider the costs very well until we have a mitigation plan. We're told we won't really be able to do that for about two or three years. So we have a preliminary idea of part of the costs, which are substantial. One thing I wanted to mention before I go into specifics about the pipeline costs is the fact that the existing users are being billed for 20% of the Big Chino project, ongoing costs. This was done back in 2009. Mr. Recker, Mr. Lamerson suggested that 20% of the costs should go to existing users because there would be a benefit from the Big Chino project because the effluent from, generated from that water would go towards the overdraft. Now there's a discussion about returning all or part of the effluent out of the AMA, which will not help the existing users at all if all of the Big Chino water is used by new users and then sent back to the Big Chino. So I have a concern that no one else has brought up that I know of, that if we do go with that plan to return the water, we need to review the existing users' charges. As far as the next steps, I think you have to wait for the decision and order to see what there is as far as a need for this water. We can discuss insurance policies. There's a question about drought and how long our water supply will last in the AMA. We're depleting our water supply. Now, is it going to last 100 years? Is it going to last 110? Or is it going to last 90? Does it really matter? We're going to destroy our aquifer here, so let's plan on 100, in 100 years, we'll need that water. I don't know the relevance of that right now. I don't think this pipeline is going to ever be built, to be honest with you. But we need to analyze the cost, all the costs ahead of time. And the next steps did not include a vote of the public. We don't go out and buy easements. According to Proposition 401, this project qualifies under Prop 401, the Taxpayers Protection Initiative. The city cannot proceed, the city can proceed on studies, which the city's doing. It can consider costs for litigation. It can't spend money to further construction easements, as far as my understanding. And that's why Mr. Lamerson stopped the purchase of easements after Prop 401 was passed. So the next steps needs to have a Prop 401 vote. You need to have the full cost presented to the public. What's the chances of the public voting to approve not 300 million, but maybe with this mitigation plan, let's talk about 400 million or more? Do you really think the public's going to vote for that? Will you get a 10% vote for it? I don't think so. And I just basically wanted to cover one other thing. I think I covered everything I needed to cover. Thank you.
Gary Beverley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to speak on this. Couple of things. The idea that the Big Chino Pipeline is going to get us to safe yield is pure poppycock. That was baloney that ADWR put in the fourth management plan. You don't have to be a rocket scientist to understand that. If the ADWR gives the current overdraft, it's 21,000 acre feet a year. Prescott and Prescott Valley pump over 75% of the water, so their share of that overdraft might be 16 or so million acre feet a year. The Big Chino Water Ranch could produce eight. Doesn't even come close. And Prescott Valley has committed in their 2035 general plan to use that water for growth, not for safe yield. Prescott has made kind of equivocal statements, no firm decision on that. But if you're going to spend hundreds of millions of dollars just to get halfway to safe yield, I think that's a highly questionable decision. So ADWR is way off base. Brian, you should take that line off your slides. Secondly, this whole project is not substantiated by any rational planning process. You have no study to show that importing water from the Big Chino is the best alternative. There are other alternatives out there that have never been investigated. Why would you spend public money unless you know that you're getting the most bang for the buck? Why would you spend public money if you don't know that that's the best alternative? There are other alternatives that need to be studied. We need a comprehensive evaluation of the environmental, economic, and social impacts of each of several water management alternatives, such as stormwater management recharge, such as aggressive conservation, such as water neutral development for new developments. There's much more that can be done that has not been done. Big Chino Water Ranch was an assumption made by the legislature in, what, 2000? They didn't study this. You need to get back to the basic question, is this the best course of action? I really appreciate Mayor Good bringing up the idea of mitigation. You have an agreement with Salt River Project and Prescott Valley that you will mitigate any harm that the pumping in the Big Chino does to the base flow of the Verde River. Every hydrologist that has been involved in this project, including your hired consultants, has said that pumping the Big Chino will reduce the base flow of the Verde River. That river is now in an extraordinarily fragile condition. The base flow is now about half of the pre-development flow. Just today, I'm, and I have a meeting with Prescott Forest scientists tomorrow describing some of the physical and biologic changes that have taken place in the river due to the recent declines in base flow. The Verde is a problem right now, and I'm very concerned with its future. This project has to come up with a mitigation plan that's not figured in any of these cost estimates. I'm told by others that mitigation can sometimes double the cost of a project. I don't know. We'll have to see. But this whole cost thing is extraordinarily premature. Finally, there's a little matter of a public vote that has to happen on this. I can, I can tell you that at this point, I don't see the public supporting these kind of expenditures if it's going to harm the river. I think there's tremendous public support and understanding for this river. And actually, I've worked for 15 years to build that. So the public is especially not going to support this when there's no transparency involved in these negotiations and planning. In 2010, when the city agreed with SRP to do the monitoring and modeling project, that then locked the public out. All those negotiations and preparations have been done by locked doors with the explanation that this is in settlement of litigation between private parties. We don't know what's going on. And I want to say that the environmental community has just about had enough of this. We need to know what's going on. I really appreciate this presentation today. That really helps. It exposes a lot of flaws and problems. So there's a lot of work that remains to be done on this. And if you want the public to approve this, you need to prove that the Verde will not be harmed, and you need to prove that this is the best use of taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Councilman Gamboge.
Before today, I thought the discussion of the Big Chino was a bivariate equation. What we've learned today is there's a lot more involved with the whole discussion of the Big Chino. So I wanted to thank city staff for beginning the conversation. We learned a lot today, and I suspect we'll learn a lot more in the upcoming weeks. Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns? I think we're concluded here. Thanks, thanks for, Brian, very much. Lisa from Black and Vetch. Raymond, you didn't get a chance to say much, but thanks for coming. Appreciate the attendance and the public's comments. They'll be considered very seriously. We'll move on to item B.
Presentation and discussion regarding possible code updates as follows. Addition of sanction authority to city hearing officers. Use of recreational vehicles for habitation purposes during the construction of residence. Amendments to the city's parking code to allow enforcement of posted parking signs. And initial discussions of an ordinance to limit heavy truck traffic on city roads.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As part of our attempts to try and update the city code, we have four possible updates today, three of which we have kind of rough drafts. Again, this is your code, and so we're looking for your direction. The first one should be quick. All three of the ones that have been drafted have been uploaded onto our website, and we haven't received any public comment yet. But I wanted to go through quickly. I know we're kind of low on time. But briefly, the first one being an update to Prescott City Code 1-14-A. And this relates to enforcement and sanctions for violations of the city code. So as it stands, we've updated our code to allow for a hearing officer process. We've went through the hiring process. We have someone hired. That begins on, first hearings begin on May 1st. So under our code as redrafted, the hearing officer can issue sanctions, but only for violations to the city's property maintenance code, which leaves out certain other types of violations that may be relevant for the hearing officer. For example, violations of the zoning code. So in more cleanup than anything, we proposed updating 1-14-A to allow for sanctions to be issued for those other types of code violations by the hearing officer, in addition to the city court, who already has authority to do that. So that is the change proposed in 1-14-A. It's the bolded language right there. And that's it for this item. I'll look for direction or move on.
Can you give us some examples, Attorney Young?
Yeah, I think zoning is our main example. So most of what the hearing officer will deal with is property maintenance, grass too long or something like that. But for example, if a garage is built right along the property line, that would be in violation of the zoning code. That would be something that would be appropriate for the hearing officer to hear and issue sanctions. Right now, because it's zoning, not property maintenance, wouldn't have authority to issue sanctions there. So that would be, that's what we had in mind in redrafting it.
So I think what you're saying is currently, if there are zoning violations and they're found to be legitimate violations, there's not much we can do.
Not a whole lot. There's things we can do through the building permit process, stuff like that, but not through the hearing officer process, which is part of the reason why the hearing officer was created. In large part, it was for property maintenance, and so we're set there. But for zoning ordinance violations, that's kind of the secondary part of the hearing officer, and that's why we want to clean up this language.
Councilmember Rusi.
I have a couple of questions. So when you talk about sanctions, are you talking about fines or liens? What kind of sanctions?
Fines and liens.
Okay. So example, for example, if a building's been condemned and the owner doesn't remove it, then we can take them to the hearing officer and have a lien put against it, fine them?
Exactly.
Okay. And then my second question is, you know, if a person's in violation of our ordinance in zoning and they're, they have a hearing scheduled, I'd like to see some language that says, in the meantime, if they apply for a permit for some other property or maybe for that property, for like an extension of utilities or something, that we will not issue any permits or utility extensions to. that we will not issue any permits or utility extensions to them until their violation is taken care of?
We can look at, that's a little bit outside of this, but I think that's would be appropriate. As part of this also, we intend to bring forward an administrative fee as well for the hearing officer, the $75 court fee that council approved a few months ago, or like six months ago, maybe, to have a similar fee for the hearing officer process, to make, offset the cost of that process, and to make it consistent.
Counselman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, I was just wondering if you could clarify, from my understanding, what the difference between like a citation and a sanction is?
Yeah, citation is just a notice that you're in violation. But in order to enforce it, you have to go through some sort of fact-finding process. So a citation would be a ticket and a speeding ticket. It doesn't mean anything until it is enforced through a court. The court would be the fact-finder to determine that, yes, there is a violation of a speeding law, for example. And then the sanction is the penalty for it, the fine.
So in this instance, we're talking about like zoning issues or code enforcement, like weeds being too high.
Yes, it would be, the citation would be correspondence from community development that, hey, you're in violation of the zoning ordinance.
And then it would go to court, and that's when the sanction would be?
Right. Then it would go to, currently, it would go under court, but under the hearing officer process, it could go to the hearing officer to make the fact-finding, and then they could issue the sanction, the fine.
Thank you.
Counselman Gamboge.
Are we going to take a straw poll on this, or Joe's looking for some guidance?
This will be coming, this will be coming for a vote. And it'll be coming in this context, unless we hear direction that this isn't appropriate, or you have a problem with it. So it's just looking for a little direction. And I don't think we need a straw poll, but a look of-
No, we're just trying to make any possible suggestions like Councilmember Rusing just provided. So they'll take that into consideration, and then bring it back, and then we'll vote on it. Counselmember Rusing.
I would just like to thank Mr. Young and his staff for coming up with the hearing officer idea. I think it's going to expedite and streamline the process. Currently, it's somewhat laborious. People have to go to the court. In this way, we can have a hearing right here in council chambers, and it'll be a lot more cost-effective and timely. Thank you.
And I'd add to that by saying, I think there's pretty broad agreement that having a government body produce requirements of the public, and then, once they're identified as being violated, not having any enforcement teeth to be able to make sure that those things are actually corrected, and send a message that the expectation is that people will follow the land development code, and there's consequences if they don't. And I know there's certain members of the public that have kind of concluded that they can kind of ignore some of these violations and just keep doing what they're doing, and making the enjoyment of their neighbor's property diminished significantly. It impacts property values and other impacts that sometimes the violating individual doesn't consider. And I think it's important that we have equal application of the law throughout the city. So I certainly would support this effort on this particular 1-14-A. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, I just had two quick questions. Will you have a cap? Is there some kind of an imposed cap on the sanctions that your office will be able to enforce?
The cap is found in the code itself.
Okay.
So the caps are set out within our code, and they would remain the same.
And what about, how does this relate to our code enforcement office, then? Do they, do they report directly to you, or do the violations still run through ComDev? Or how does that work?
The violations run through ComDev, and they would be primarily responsible for the hearings and so forth, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any public comment on this?
No, Mayor.
Okay, we can move on to the next, next item in this group.
All right. The next is the proposed change to the Prescott Land Development Code, Section 6 to 4, Use of Recreational Vehicles on Residential Property. So just briefly, we updated, as you know, the camping ordinance last year, expanded the definition of camping, and placed limits on time, place, and manner restrictions. And it also limited camping on private property. At that time, council directed that we look at our code to perhaps open up the ability to camp on your private property in an RV or a camp trailer if you are in the process of building a home. So that's what this is now, kind of a follow-up on that. Just as a recap, under our camping ordinance, camping on private property is restricted to no more than 14-day periods on your private property, and no more than five times per year. And as you look in Section 6 there, or Paragraph 6, camping in recreational vehicles shall be governed accordance with the Prescott Land Development Code. So right now, residential use in your RV is prohibited under the land development code. So we wanted to bring back that change that we discussed previously. One other thing to keep in mind is Land Development Code 2.6.9, which we discussed at the time we enacted the land, or the camping ordinance, which does allow for use of your recreational vehicle if you're rebuilding after a fire or other disaster. So that's already in place. And the update would just create an exception for when you're currently building, and only for the duration of your building permit. And so I have the language up there. It would be an exception to the general rule that you are not allowed to reside in your residential, or your RV, or a camp trailer, and as I mentioned, allows for doing so if, for the duration of your building permit. So any-
Counselmember Rusing.
Thank you. I know that we've explored this. I looked into it, and I just can't support this. I think allowing people to live at a construction site, it's going to turn neighborhoods into dog patch. It's going to be very dangerous. What if they're living in their RV, and they have a bunch of kids living with them, grandkids running around on a construction site? It's going to be very hard. We have a hard enough time enforcing our codes and ordinances, and we just can't go around to every construction site and quiz people as to what they're doing. For example, it took four years for the house to be built right next to me, and I can't imagine someone living in their RV for four years. If you want to be up here while you're building a home, then just rent a space in an RV park for your RV. Another example would be if the homeowner's living on the construction site, what if the workers want to live on the construction site? You could have a whole camp there. And then what about generators? I mean, those things are noisy. They're very smelly. People run them at all hours. You'd have to make sure they, they've got the utilities trenched in first, and have a, an electrical board up so that they can plug in. I just can't see this being enforceable, and I just, I just can't support this at all. Thank you.
Counselman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, I had a question for you regarding the enforcement of this and the usage of it. My recollection from when this was discussed, when we first kind of brought it up, was that this is similar to language that the county uses? Is that correct?
It is correct. The county has similar language. There's, as far as I recall, there are restrictions on the size of the property. It has to be a certain size to be able to use your RV on that property, which we could include if that's what council wants. And George is here also did-
I guess the reason I'm asking is, I'm just, to Councilmember Rusing's point, like, I wonder if in unincorporated parts of Yopai County, they're having an outbreak of construction workers creating tenement camps on undeveloped parts of property? I'm guessing they don't. So I'm just curious if there's not, if we can't mirror this closer to the county's way of doing it, so that we don't run into this problem that might, may or may not exist. And I mean, to me, I guess the other question, you kind of went through that slide fast, but going back maybe two slides? There is, is it, the permit shall be nine months. So is it nine months, and then they would essentially have to appeal to the community development director to extend it beyond that?
No, this is, this is what's in our current ordinance for those who have had a fire or other disaster. So under our proposed update, it would be for the length of time of the building permit. I will say, though, that it is for only the owner of the property.
Only for, so there's no, there's no construction worker component there?
Right.
I mean, I wonder if there's not, I mean, to Councilmember Rusing's point, it can take a while for people to build a home. I wonder if there isn't some reasonable time length we could add into it to make it a little bit more palatable, so that we don't have people living on our site for four years at a time? That would seem excessive to me as well.
Yeah, certainly. I think to the extent we want to go this route, we could also, as I mentioned, this is, this is your ordinance, and I'm trying to capture what you want, but we could limit it to a year, two years, or some other nine months for whatever we wanted to do.
Yeah, I just, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm a big private property person, so the idea of this council taking draconian measures to limit people's use of their private property offends my conservatism. So I guess I would like to find a way where we can kind of split the difference and find a way forward to both give people the ability to use their property as they see fit, and supervise construction of probably what, for a lot of people, is the single biggest investment they'll make of their lives, and also not allow them to impact other people's enjoyment of their private property. So to whatever degree we're able to kind of thread that needle a little bit more, maybe, maybe putting a time length in there, and then allowing for a similar appeal process that's outlined in the emergency measure would be my, my consideration.
Thank you. Counselman Gamboge.
I think Councilman Montoya got to one of my questions. I've built two houses, but both of them are in the Midwest, and they didn't take anywhere near nine months. But houses I see constructed in my neighborhood takes longer than that. Lois, you built a house. How long did you build it?
And I built it prior to the crisis. It was a year. Now they're running 18 months plus.
Now Lois had pitched a tent. Is that legal?
My HOA would not have allowed that.
So that brings me to my last question. Is this, is this, if an HOA says you can't have an RV?
This can't override the HOA.
It can't override the HOA. I, I think we ought to have some discussion of size of lots, so we don't have a RV shoehorned in a job site and around other houses that are too close that maybe take up parking.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Gamboge just kind of touched on what I was going to suggest also. So the HOA, the CCNRs, this cannot override the CCNRs. So presumably, there will be no camping in any pad, planned area development, that has a HOA.
Presumably. I mean, each, the CCNRs at each HOA is different, but I don't think any that I know of would allow it.
Could we put a limit that it would have to be an acre or more? Because Kathy brought up a good point about the generators. They are very loud. Now, I know I have a brother who lives in Coyote Springs. He had, I don't know, 26 acres. He lived out there for a year and a half to two years before they built. But that's a different situation than what we're talking about here in the city of Prescott, mostly. We have smaller lots. Could we limit the size of the lot to be able to allow this? Maybe add some language? And maybe even add the language about the HOA, just to be specific, with people right off the bat understanding that this would not be applicable in any kind of an HOA or a pad, a planned area development, and not leave it solely up to the, the language in the CCNRs?
Yeah, we could certainly do that. We could say, where CCNRs allow, you may do this.
Okay, one more question. Could this be something that would be required to get a special use permit, if it were something that violated the smaller than one acre?
Not as it's currently drafted, but we could do it that way. In fact, as I kind of showed the code here, this is for temporary use permits. So we could require a temporary use permit if that's what council wants.
Yeah, because, you know, one of the things that's going to have to be determined by somebody, probably in community development, is where is this appropriate? I have historic lots that are 50 wide by 150 deep. As you know, with 50 wide, and you've got, you know, you establish your setbacks, and you put a trailer in there with a generator running around the clock, it's going to be very uncomfortable for the neighbor next door. So I do think that some judgment's going to have to, we're going to have to allow somebody through this language to apply some judgment on where this is appropriate. So I think it would be appropriate to have a special use permit where the inspector would have to go out and take a look at some of these things, just to make sure that we're not just allowing a blanket approval for somebody to pull a trailer in a neighborhood that is just not going to fit.
And if I may, I think the suggestion regarding lot size, maybe more appropriate than lot size, is a distance from the construction. And this, under this rule, it does have to be on the site plan. So it would keep that on the site plan, but it would have to be, I think having a specific distance from the construction makes a little bit more sense than having just a straight lot size. But again, this is up to you.
Well, you know, think about this, though. We're looking right now at allowing ADUs, the accessory dwelling units. Are we also going to allow people to pull a trailer in to live while they're building an ADU? I mean, I think this is a little vague for me. I'd like to kind of tighten it up a little bit, and promote the special use permit, so that somebody would have to go out and see if this, the proposed lot is appropriate. And we've got some really tiny lots downtown as well. So I just would like to have some specificity on where this goes.
I'll say, as it relates to that, it wouldn't be allowed on an ADU, because this is for the construction of a single-family home when it's part, it's on the site plan. So it has to be part of that site plan and developed. There are other things that I've taken from this conversation, but I don't think that one would be allowed, even as it's currently drafted.
Well, no, I see this as more of a solution in search of a problem. I'm not even aware that this is such a frequency that it needs to have a, kind of a new revised ordinance to deal with it. I have heard from people who complain about somebody who's living in a RV on a parking lot, or on a driveway, and having a generator running 24/7 in a kind of a more dense, single-family home development. And I think this requires more code enforcement, more monitoring, more measuring of time, setting up follow-up visits from code enforcement. I just don't think we have the capacity to deal with the problems we have right now and add another one like this. Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. You're making some of the points I intended on making. I think understanding now that LDC 2.6.9 exists, you know, that's when you could see a whole area of town burning down, and there's not enough hotel rooms to deal with the situation. I love that the exception is there, and I think that's more of what the public would need in those kind of situations. I couldn't imagine having someone living in a trailer three feet away from my property line. And so even if we were going to go there, I think the half an acre or greater would have to be, the setbacks would have to be, we're getting to the point of adding so much specificity to protect the neighbors, that, again, I'm where the mayor netted out, that I think we have, the right exception is in the code already with fires and natural disasters, and I think this is above and beyond to our detriment as a community.
Counselmember Rusing.
Thank you. I'd like to add that I spoke with a contractor who's been building homes in this area for 40 years. And I said, so, how many people have wanted to live on their property? And he said, well, there was one guy out in the county in Groom Creek a long time ago. So I agree. I think this is a solution, looking for a problem, and it's just going to open up a can of worms, because there's going to be so many loopholes, and people are going to be noncompliant. And there's no way that we're going to be able to chase everyone down and check on them every week. Thank you.
Well, Attorney Young, I think you're going to have a heavy lift to come up with something that's acceptable.
That's true. Just for the record, this wasn't my solution to a problem. This was directed at council. I will, I'll bring forward, I think that right now it's fairly split. I'll bring something based on all of the input I received, hopefully meets your requirements. And if it's voted down- and if it's voted down, that's fine, too.
Fair enough. Let's move on to the next proposal.
Okay, this will be presented by, oh, they're doing exactly what I asked, thank you. PD will present on parking violations. We, as we were enforcing parking code, realized that there were certain things we couldn't enforce or that the code was vaguely written, and so my office opined that we couldn't enforce them. So, this is an attempt to address that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Lieutenant Jason Small with the Prescott Police Department. So, in, all we're trying to look to do is just to clarify some things. We're not changing a whole lot. With the old code, in 917, it had a Section B which stated that you had to obey signs. It was titled obeying signs, but didn't state that you shall obey signs. So, officers were going into court, making a citation for not obeying a sign, and it wasn't found to be valid because it didn't state that. So, what we're wanting to do is eliminate Section B in 917 and condense that into, into Section A and lists, and make 10 lists of things that you can and cannot do. Primarily, 917. Number two would be adding the word perpendicular parking stall line. So, when you park, you have to be within 18 inches of the perpendicular stall line, which is going to be the forward stall line, meaning that you need to get all the way into the parking spot. So, in the prior code, it didn't have the word perpendicular, so we were going into court, and if you were within 18 inch, of, 18 inches of the parallel line, you met the code, and that was not what the citation was for. So, we need to, we need to correct that as well. Additionally, I'll, I'll show you some examples. So, this is, this is Bashford Courts. When, when folks back in, we had no backing because of the auto chalk system, which is how we regulate timed parking. We weren't able to force this appropriately because the old Section B was just a title that you had to obey the signs. It was not, it didn't say that you shall. So, what we want to add additionally would be revised ordinance that you cannot, a vehicle cannot obstruct any portion of a sidewalk, official pedestrian way, or officially designated bicycle way, or any driveway. So, in this instance, we had this guy, if he had been parked on the street blocking that roadway, we could have forced that with Arizona Revised Statute law. He was up on the city easement on the sidewalk, and the old code didn't account for that. So, we had, we got a complaint, but we had no way to, to enforce this because of the, of the way the code was written. So, additionally with, we want to, so that everyone can use the appropriate amount of public parking, we want to make sure that people park within the delineated lines. So, that's also spelled out specifically in the new revised statute. So, you won't have a situation here where the, basically the spot behind this, this person is not usable because now you're going to stick out into the roadway. It, it just basically clarifies things so that when a citizen goes and gets a parking ticket, he can look at the code, or she can look at the code and, and see what it really is. It was vague before, and now it's, it's just making a more specific delineations of what we need to, to enforce. Again, here, the, the code says that you cannot stick out into any roadway, any bicycle path. So, in this instance, and again, the, one of the mayor's favorite is on Gurley, sticking right out in front of the courthouse. So, that one is delineated. These are not, but you can't block the, the driveway here or, or back in. So, those are the things that we're looking to clarify, and I apologize, we don't have the, the revision text on here, but it's not, not really trying to change anything that we're doing, but, but making sure that we can go into court and have an enforceable code.
Well, I certainly appreciate this, Lieutenant Small. I think as we see the ongoing proliferation of longer vehicles, wider vehicles, so many of our parking slots and things like that were never designed for these huge passenger vehicles that, back in the day, would be considered a large commercial truck. I mean, you've got extended side view mirrors, even the truck beds and the king cab cabs just make it more and more likely that people trying to park in what was, used to be a typical passenger vehicle parking space are going to have to start thinking about finding a place a little farther away that doesn't obstruct traffic or make it dangerous and maybe have to walk a block to where they're going. Maybe if that was more clear, people would think twice about acquiring these huge vehicles and just consider, "Oh, it's just a pickup truck."
Yep.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I was reading the code last night and trying to understand, because it's the secret of my marriage, is some of these specifications. And 12 inches versus 18 inches, especially if you're parallel parking on Gurley, you know, up by Elk Theater and whatever, if you go 18 inches, you are hanging into the street from the curb. And so, some of the places, I was just wondering why 18?
And again, I'm, I, I think it's a, kind of a standard that was used in the Arizona Revised Statutes, so we're trying to stay consistent with the Arizona Revised Statutes, but also in this code is you can't block a walkway, a pedestrian way, sidewalk, or vehicle pathway now. So, that's spelled out in here. So, you may be 18 inches, but if you're blocking that other way or travel way, now you're also in violation, so.
Okay, so you've written this, that no matter what, if that happens, they're going to get a ticket.
It's enforceable, yeah.
Thank you.
If you're blocking a traffic way or a pathway or a walkway, now we're enforceable, whereas before we weren't.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Jason, just a quick question on the situation with Bashford Courts and the no backing in signs. I received quite a few email communications when that was being discussed, and I think that's what brought a lot of this to the head. Is backing in not going to be allowed in that location? I, I just want to clarify because there was some real opposition to that signage, that people felt like they should be allowed to back in and park back in in that location.
Yeah, and, and again, the squeaky wheels were the ones that you were, you were hearing from. That's up to you all. If, if you don't want that enforcement, if we want, if we're going to enforce timed enforcement, our method now, because of the courts, we're no longer able to touch the vehicle to make a chalk mark. We're, we're using an auto chalk system. So, our auto chalk system works off of reading a license plate and a whole lot of other things and showing the time and all that. So, if we, if we allow backed in parking in, in Bashford Courts, we're not going to be able to enforce timed parking with the system that we have. So, that'll be up to you guys. If you guys.
So, I guess my question is, the language that's written in this revision, is that going to make it universal then in the city for backing in, not just at Bashford Courts, but in other locations?
Well, and if, if you look at the, at the definitions where, where like unangled parking, it's the front wheels have to be at the perpendicular line. So, that means you can't, you're not going to be able to be backed in. So, basically, backing in, for the most part, is not legal in, in the majority of, of city parking. As far as Bashford Courts goes, if, if it's a situation where you choose that we don't want to enforce that, that'll be up to you all, but just know that for us to enforce timed parking there, the system that I use is, is not going to work with people backed in.
Thank you.
Councilman Gamboge.
This is a real, real wake-up call, so thank you. Now, I used, I lived in Southeast Asia twice, and parking in Southeast Asia is like putting one more sardine in a sardine can. So, you always backed in. You couldn't pull in forward. What was your rationale for not backing in?
Again, we, the, the courts have ruled that we can no longer physically touch a vehicle to mark it for, so that we could tell how long you had been to enforce timed parking. So, when we have two-hour parking, we used to have a guy that walked around with a chalk stick. So, that's not legal anymore. So, we went to a, it's a, it's a automatic license plate reader system that shows the time that it read your plate.
Oh, so you're reading the license plate?
Right, and Arizona, you only have to have a rear plate. So, for us to enforce timed parking, we need to be able to see the rear plate.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Yeah, I am totally for enforce, we've been talking enforcement throughout the day. So, if we have timed parking and there's a reason for it, whether it be in streets or be in lots, we need to enforce it, and, and we can't allow people to keep backing in and not have equal enforcement, as much as all the other things we've been talking about in neighborhoods. So, I'm all for what you're doing. Thank you.
Congratulations, Lieutenant.
We have about five minutes left. I'm sorry, I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention.
I know, but we're done. If you want to make a last-minute comment, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry. I guess my question still with this backing in issue is, even in this parking lot, we've got backing in. Council members are backing into their parking places. If you go downstairs right now, there's council members that are backed into the parking lot, but we don't have a timed lot, so it's going to be confusing. Can you park, can you back in this lot, but you can't back in this lot? It should be universal, either you can back in or you can't back in, because some places are time-sensitive and time, some aren't. So, I think it's going to create confusion with this backing in issue.
Well, and again, the, let's say backing in on Cortez Street, you're going to have to go into oncoming traffic, which is illegal to back in. So, there's, it, it's kind of site-specific as to the, all of the reasons. I mean, some of them are safety, but for us to enforce timed parking, that's the case as well.
I understand that it's, but it's, that's where I think it's going to create the confusion, whereas some parking lots you can back in and some parking lots you won't be able to back in.
I suppose you could.
So, signage would be where we, would be key. So, so if you were to have a sign that said backing, back, backing in parking allowed or, or in like Bashford Courts, it's, it's not allowed. It's, it's, the signage is what we're, we're enforcing there, is that it's a legal sign. So, again, that, that would be something that could remedy some of these other places.
Yeah, and I think it's really about enforcing the signs that we do have. And currently, we, when it comes to backing parking or no back-end parking, we can't enforce that. And so, the change would allow it to be enforced where those signs are posted.
Okay, I think we have one additional ordinance proposal to deal with.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I know that we're kind of flying through this, we started a little bit later. And this is just really an initial discussion on this item regarding limitations on heavy truck use on city streets. So, this was brought up, that Patagonia ordinance, and I just have it here briefly, they limit the number of trips of heavy trucks per week on their city roads or town roads. And in their ordinance, a heavy truck is defined as a truck with more than two non-steering axles, and the prohibition is that no person, firm or entity can drive on town streets more than 100 times per week. And no more than 20 times per week between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. So, this was brought up as, as something that Patagonia did, and it was found to be enforceable and lawful by the Arizona Attorney General. And brought up whether the city should do the same thing. And so, really, I don't have a lot to talk about. I wanted to hear your input. I know we're limited on time. I think this is pretty hard to see, but this shows here the local truck routes and the through-truck routes within the city as it currently exists. The city's fairly limited on regulations on heavy trucks. There is some requirements, and it mostly has to deal with where they drive. But, the question to, I'm asking of council is whether this is something we want to explore, considering we have to look a little bit more into the roadway design, how much weight it can handle versus the traffic load it's currently getting, that there could be unintended consequences. And as long as there's a rational basis for this type of thing, we can do it. But I think there's a lot to discuss, and this was just the initial discussion to bring it up and get some initial thoughts from council.
Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you. In case members of the public are wondering why we're having this conversation, south of town, about 10 miles south of town, south of Mount Vernon, there is a Chinese gold mine that is planning on strip mining the top of Mount Tridle. They've leased 1,000 acres of Forest Service land. They've got, they've bought up all the patented mining claims out there, and we've always had mining out there, but this is, this is an operation that is beyond imagination. It's just going to be an open pit strip mine, and they plan on loading up ore trucks, driving down Senator Highway, turning on to Hazely Road, and then continuing south down 89, down Yarnell Hill, all the way to the port of Long Beach, and loading the ore up onto cargo ships for China. And we need to be prepared for this, and so I think we need to have a, more research and look into this and have, save this for another study session because we might be looking at having checkpoints, checking on drivers' licenses, safety checks for these trucks, weigh stations, fines, taxes, fees. I mean, it's, it's just unimaginable what is being planned out there if our federal authorities don't put a stop to it. There's already been lawsuits over this, so we'd keep our fingers crossed, but in the meantime, we need to be prepared. Thank you.
Well, let me jump in and clarify those comments. This is not proposed for any specific development, even though the one you're talking about could possibly have an impact here. I've been monitoring this situation for probably over five years. I think a lot of people understood there was a Pozillon mine that was proposed, and it has been developed over in the Kirkland area. And my concern originally was this Pozillon possibly being sent up to the Drake Cement Plant up in the Palden area. And let's face it, we have a very challenging road structure within the city. We don't really have the ability to expand roads. In some cases, they're expanded as far as they already can. So, adding additional lanes for additional traffic is sometimes not possible. And having these very heavy trucks have a really damaging impact on our road condition. So, I think having some consideration of putting in place some reasonable restrictions on very heavy truck traffic is reasonable within the city. So, this would apply not only to mining operations, but also to logging operations. There's a lot of different heavy truck use that, if allowed to be unregulated, can have a very dangerous impact on our driving public. I can just imagine some of these trucks going down 89 off of White Spar during the winter when it's icing and maybe sliding off the roadway and closing 89 for hours and hours and hours. So, I think having a reasonable ordinance to be able to have some impact on limiting the amount of heavy truck traffic at this time is a reasonable regulation to make sure we maintain a safe road conditions. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Joe, you spoke about, just a few minutes ago, about, you said the words rational basis. So, that begs the question, have, has any law that you know of or any case law established any rights of the residential neighborhoods? For example, I'm thinking of iconic Mount Vernon, which is where one of these mines will be using, that's running right through a historic neighborhood. Can we limit the hours that they run? Can we limit how many trips they take a day? Can we limit the gross vehicle weight of these trucks? And are they going to be paying more taxes if they tear our roads up? There's so many questions I have in terms of how this is going to affect our residential areas. For example, can we direct them to only go through commercial areas and not residential homes? I don't think we even possess a road like that here in Prescott that isn't going through a residential neighborhood.
Yeah, so as to your first question, have we looked at case law relating to kind of protecting homeowners? No, that will take some time. I will tell you that the Patagonia restrictions do have a heavier restriction at night, indicated, and that was found to be lawful, so indicating that nighttime restrictions are appropriate. As it relates to, do we have kind of the weight restrictions on, not in our code, but there is weight restrictions in, in state law, and that's enforced. It's tough to, it will be tough to enforce, and I think it's something to consider. We don't have a weigh station, and I, as far as I know, there's no way to kind of bring in a portable weigh station. I, I don't know that, but we'd have to look into that. I will tell you, do we have, can we mandate what roads they go on or heavy trucks go on? And the answer is yes. And the answer is yes, and that is the one thing we currently do have in our ordinance. And that's this map here. And I know it's tough, it's kind of a mess. But I can send it out to you, so you can look at it a little bit more. But under our ordinance, it requires that if you're traversing through the city in a heavy truck, and the heavy truck is a one-ton truck or more, you have to get to a through route as soon as possible, taking one of these local truck routes. So we do have certain requirements in place, but it doesn't address all of the other things that council's brought up.
If you have a semi with a, you know, dragging a trailer, so you've got basically a double dump truck load, is there a way to, I mean, it's so less invasive if you have a one-ton pickup truck with a trailer. So instead of bringing, you know, one giant truck through with a trailer, you're going to bring five smaller trucks with the same amount of stuff. And I'm, you know, just throwing that out there. But a smaller pickup truck with a smaller trailer is less invasive in the neighborhoods than these big, giant rigs trying to make it around those areas there. I don't know. I think...
It is, and I think that's a question for Public Works. I think Gwen just stepped out, but they've started to look at this. And I've asked for some answers in terms of what is the design load for the roads that we currently have? And what, at what point does it cause damage? And I think if this is a discussion that council wants to have, as we go forward, we need to bring those numbers, and we will. But kind of as a baseline, is that a discussion we do want to have?
And absolutely no trucks after 8 o'clock.
You know, I'm going to cut you off, Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
We're far beyond our study time, study session time period. We've got a lot of people here that are here for the voting session. I think generally, this concern about truck traffic is reasonable to see if we can design something that's acceptable. But I think going into the detail at this time is, we're just past our study session period. So I thank everyone for attending. I'm sure you're here for the voting session. So if you'll allow us maybe five minutes to take a little break here, and then we'll come back. It's, right now, it's 3:08, so we'll begin our voting session at 3:13.